Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order July 27 PCBA meeting. Roll please, Jen. Oh, it's at 7:01.
Chairman Kempa.
Here.
Commissioner DeGraff is absent by prior notice. Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Here.
Commissioner Raigil, absent. Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Let's look at the minutes from the June 22 meeting. Are there any corrections? The only one that I see is the time is 7:30, probably should be 7:03 or something closer to that. If there are no other corrections, can I please have a motion to approve the minutes from the June 22 meeting as presented?
I'll make that motion that they be approved as corrected.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Okay. The first item on the agenda is the old business PCBA case number 23-06V. The applicant is Joy Cuisano at 414 Kerry Court in Prospect Heights. This case was to allow a playhouse in a front yard. Can I have a motion to reopen the case?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the applicant has withdrawn the application. I don't think there's any other action required at this point.
The only thing I'd like to add is, as part of the application or the withdrawal by the applicant, they requested a time period to the end of September for removal based on their, because the daughter is buying their own house and they play for it, we'll go with the move.
Okay.
And I believe it's till the end of September, the closing and the move, so the city is willing to grant that they've been advised that should it be there past that date, they will be issued citations.
Okay. All right, so with that on record, can I please have a motion to close the public hearing case number 23-06V?
I'll make that motion.
Second, please.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. First, new business. PCBA case number 23-10V. The applicant is Philip Kochanski. And the nature of the application is... The owner of the subject property is seeking variation to section 5-6-1E5 of the City of Prospect Heights zoning code to allow the reduction of the required rear yard setback from 50 feet to 16 and 1/4 feet for the construction of an addition to a single-family home.
Prior to moving forth, did you receive any of the green cards back from the mailing?
Correct. I got all of them.
Yeah, if you could turn those in, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Can I please have a motion to open public hearing case number 23-10V?
I'll make the motion. Second.
Roll please.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
I'll second.
We're doing a roll call.
Oh, here.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Do you want to give us a briefing prior to...?
Yes.
Just a real briefing shortly.
Chairman Kempa, members of PCBA, before us tonight is a case at 910 Sherwood Drive. The applicant is seeking to rear yard variation to construct an addition, a garage addition to the, into the required 50-foot rear yard. So the variation is to reduce the rear yard from 50 feet to just a little over 16 feet. And he did provide proof of notice and he did provide in the packet, hand-signed, where he went to the neighbors to discuss the project as part of the exhibit.
Correct.
So therefore, that's the case before us.
All right. I see the applicant is here, but I swear you in. Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record, and then you could present your case for us.
My first name is Philip, last name Kochanski, K-O-C-H-A-N-S-K-I. My street address is 910 Sherwood Drive, Prospect Heights, Illinois 60070.
Thank you. If you could, you know, present your case to us.
Well, thank you for putting me in and having my case. That I moved in very recently here to this building, to the property, and I'm finding out, you know, there's absolutely lack of basement, there's no basement whatsoever. I have only crawl spaces, you know, it's unusable. I don't have any attic, I don't have any storage at the house at all. The garage is fairly small, and I was under impression, you know, I can add the, little bit, extend the garage to the left of the building, but then we find out the side of the building is not the side, it's actually called rear. This is why we have discrepancy. And since they call rear, you know, the offset, I mean, the setback gotta be 50. If there's going to be a side yard, it will be 15, it will be okay, but unfortunately, I'm on a corner lot, and now I have to, you know, ask you for permission to convert this, you know, setback from, you know, 50 feet to 16 and 1/4. So I can build a garage and some, I can have a space to store, you know, another car, you know. And I put on my hardship letter all the discrepancies, you know, and never been in a position like this, so a little bit stressed out. So, you know, that also, if I want to plead my case, you know, thank you to you guys. I met, you know, many, many very nice people over there, my neighbors, I went to them. I went over there on June 17 and 16, and as you can see, I don't know if you see, I went over there with my map, with all the information, and I asked them, do you mind to help me a garage? And they said absolutely not, you know, I explained, and I spent time, some people invited me to their houses. I met some people, they come into my place, you know, they really like idea, because and the garage, it doesn't, it's not going to change any look or any area. I have a huge, you know, side yard, but unfortunately, per rules, that's a core, not a side, it's called rear, so I have to come in front of the panel, ask for permission, you know, to build the garage. The garage is going to be the same type what this existing garage, you know, same bricks, same, you know, same doors. So they look nice and, you know, they're not going to take any kind of light from any neighbors or anybody. So I'm looking forward for your approval.
Okay.
If you have questions, you know, you get to answer.
We'll do that later. Thank you, if you can have a seat, if, we might have some questions for you. I have, my first question to you is, can you elaborate on the rear and the side yard setbacks? I can see the shape of the lot, even though the address is off the side street, but the lot is positioned as if it was on Glenbrook Drive.
That is correct. By definition, front yards are defined as the narrow yard, and the long yards are the side yards, and it's, in our zoning code, front yards are required to be a minimum 40-foot setback from the property line, and in rear yards, it's supposed to be 50 feet by ordinance. For interior side yards that abut another property, the setback is 15. On corner side yards like this property is, that minimum requirement is 25 feet. So even though the house is orientated towards Sherwood and addressed as Sherwood, technically Sherwood Drive is a buts, is the side street, the side yard, the house, the property abuts there, and the front yard is technically the side that faces Glenbrook. Corner yards can be addressed either one of the two streets, and in this particular case, it was addressed as Sherwood. And the reason that we're here is because that rear yard is where the encroachment is being proposed.
Is there anybody from the audience that would like to speak to this case? If you could come up to the podium, else where you in?
Takes a minute to get there, sorry.
Oh, that's fine, we have not much time. Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Sean Clisham, and I live at 20 Glenbrook Drive, which is diagonal to Philip's property.
Could you spell your last name for the record?
Clisham is C-L-I-S-H-A-M.
Thank you.
Sure. I just wanted to show support for Philip for his project, because Sherwood is essentially his front yard. The driveway leads into Sherwood, the front door faces Sherwood, and he wants to build out relative to the house would be his side. So there's no imposition, you know, for traffic or visibility, no impingement that I can tell when he had shown me the markers, you know, where the property line is, no impingement on the neighbor's yard, and to me, from what he had described would be aesthetically pleasing, would add value to the house and, you know, the surrounding homes, I have no objection whatsoever. To me, it looks like, you know, it would just improve the property and the lot and give him more functionality. So again, just, I'm just here in support of, you know, for Philip, and just say, you know, there should be no objection. Ostensibly, that's his front yard, and it would just be an addition to the existing garage, so it's not like it's going to be some disjointed incongruous kind of, you know, eyesore. It should, it should look fine and be an addition, a good, you know, addition, not to the house, but to the neighborhood as well. But, no, it's, like I say, I just wanted to lend support in some way as a neighbor, just to say, good for him, and I hope it's approved.
Thank you, I'm sure he appreciates it.
Of course. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question of the applicant?
Absolutely.
Philip, if you'd come up here a second, please. I'd like you to state for the record, the architect who is doing this, if I read correctly in your application, is the same architect that designed the house originally, is that correct?
Yes, by incident, it happens, you know. I called him up, and he said, hold on, I remember something, and then he looked through the papers, and he said, I built this house 10 years ago. So, so then I just end up with him by accident.
Okay.
Thank you.
So...
Since we have you here, any questions from the commissioners?
So I have a couple of questions. Have you looked at off-site storage for some of your belongings, or... I know that having additional cars and, you know, goods are nice to have on your property, but there's also a lot of options for storing off-site. The reason I'm kind of concerned is the proposed garage is 1,700 square feet, so it's a very large garage. If you were building a detached garage, you'd be limited to...
720.
720. So the size of the addition I'm concerned about, for one, have you considered a detached garage so that you, I mean, is this the only option that you looked at, or...
Yes, I did consider building the detached garage before, and then, you know, when I, you know, acquired the property, and then, you know, I ended up building the shed. I tried to build a shed bigger, but I find out, you know, I'm limited with a shed only to 200 feet, and then I build the shed 200 feet, and I find out the shed is not very small. I didn't have, I don't work with the dimensions, with the contractors, or anybody like this, so I build the shed and I, you know, you know, it's really small, and like I said, I don't have any kind of, you know, basement space, any kind of attic. Some people, I visit, you know, oh my God, they have a basement, they have attics, you know. I got everything on the one floor, and me having given off-site, you know, property to store, you know, like, you know, antique car, which I have one, I'm planning to get another one, it's hard to go travel somewhere. You want to, you know, come in, enjoy your car, you know, instead of sitting in front of the TV, sitting next to your car, you know, it's much better, you know, it's better in big theater, if I have option of one of the cars.
And I can appreciate that.
I tried.
I think that you have to understand too, that we have standards for variation, that we have to go down and comply, make sure that...
Correct.
...all of those standards are met. And the two that I'm kind of struggling with are special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land structure or building involved, and which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district. Because of the orientation, I kind of get it, but you, when you bought the property, you also knew that there wasn't going to be an attic space or basement, so it wasn't something that is really a hardship for you, the fact that you bought a house that didn't have the storage. So I think, you knew what you were getting in the beginning, and another standard is the alleged hardship has not been directly created by any person presently or predecessor in having, in interest, having a pri... pri...
Pri...
Prio... Inter... interest in the premises. So you can't create your own hardship, is what it's saying.
Not exactly.
But in this case, I think the fact that you've accumulated things, that you need, now need a 1,700 square foot addition, I think you've created your own hardship.
I'd like to respond to this, so, not exactly, because when I see the property and, you know, I see nice property and I see the front yard, I see my site, I see my site, I look up the rules, I look up everything, and I see the side yard, you know, the garage, you know, the side of the garage could be as close as 15 feet from the neighbor. And I looked up the paperwork, and I looked up the documentation, I looked up the ordinance in the city. So I was very happy to purchase the property with intentions to build a garage. So before I hire even, you know, my architect, I come into the city here, I talk with one of the people from the building department, and I present my case, hey, I want to build a garage. So we sit down over there, we calculate the square footage, we, you know, so he said, okay, you're within the limits, and he said, you know, okay, go ahead, you know, go ahead with my project, you know, which is, you know, will be kind of 15 feet. And then I got a phone call, maybe when the architect, I believe this is the order, presented the drawings, then, you know, I get a phone call from your office, guys, and say, oh, sorry, we made a mistake, you know, and it looks like I made a mistake when I purchased the property, because I was assuming it's 15 feet, but when I come into your office, I was instructed and I was told 15 feet from your, on the side. And then I get a phone call, sorry, we made a mistake. It was the sentence which I heard on the phone, sorry, we made a mistake. This, your side yard is not your side yard, it's rear. And, you know, if it will be called side yard, we're going to have to meet here, I'm sorry, you know. And now, you know, I go through the neighborhoods, and many neighbors, they have a garage as close as six feet from the neighbor, from the neighbor, six feet. My garage is going to be probably even less than, it's going to be about 20 feet away from the neighbor. Some people, they have a garage as close as six feet, I noticed. I went, I'm going with my dogs over there, I mean, when I have them on the weekends only, you know, so I see what happens, you know, so I figure, you know, I come into the end and, you know, we discuss this deeply, and, you know, I was informed, you know, my only option is to file for variation. So I try my best, I went to my neighbors, I inquire, even, you know, gentleman, he comes in, I even know he's coming, this is one of the great people I meet over there, I walk, you know, through, everybody, you know, have a nice property, so I like to improve the property, and there will be no harm done either to my neighbors, to the city, or to anybody like this, you know, so. And I believe, you know, you really appreciate it when the whole, the construction will be done, you see, it's very nice.
Can you elaborate why the detached garage is not an option for you?
Detached?
Yes. A detached garage would basically not require, correct me if I'm wrong, please, Director Peterson, a detached garage would not require variation, variances?
That is correct. A detached garage up to 720 square feet is a permitted structure in a rear yard, and it could go as close as 15 feet to the rear yard. He has to stay outside of the dedicated easement and five, five feet off the, what would be the interior side yard, as long as the structure itself was be inside of the 25-foot setback along grunt Sherwood. So that he's got, that is an option that could go for permit without having to have a variation.
I just want to hear from you what your thoughts on that are.
Well, honestly, you know, I'm involved with cars, with everything, you know, even if the, I would do the detached garage, the limit is 700 square foot, right?
Detached, which means it's not...
I understand, it's a 700 square feet.
720 square feet, yes.
You put like, you know, only two cars, you don't have anything else to put in, and this car, you know, I have like a dream house, you know, I like the house and everything, you know, this is my dream. I'm 60 years old, I have my whatever health problems, things like that, I don't know, and I believe, you know, to have a nice, it's not even, it looks like in a garage, I don't plan to, it's going to be garage, but it's not, looks, inside, it's going to be like a garage, you know, so I can put nice clean car, you know. I had a Corvette before, very nice, C7, you know, convertible, I had to sell it because I didn't have room to keep it, and now I'm, it was like three years ago, so I'm now kind of kicking myself, you know, I should keep it, you know, because there'll be nice, nice room. I like to have, you know, walk around the cars, you know, and then I have a nice small polished car. You put two cars in a 700 feet, and it's not going to be good enough space even for two cars, motorcycle, and then you want, I'm planning to put like a heating floor, you know, so it'd be nice, nice tiles on the floor. It looks very nice, comfy, like, you know, people putting some cars, I see in the high rises on the, on the, on the, on the 35th floor, you know, because they like to have a cars. Some people like gardens, I like cars. This is, my dream was to, 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 to house, and I had oppor, I saw opportunity to extend to the left, to the side, you know, but actually, you know, this is kind of, becomes very complicated for me, unexpectedly, you know, but look like variation, give me opportunity to meet you guys, to explain to everything, to meet my neighbors, to talk with them, if this will influence anything. I go through my neighborhoods, many garages are as close as six foot to the neighbors, and my garage probably is going to be about 20, you know, or 25, that was something like this from the neighbor, from the neighbor line.
Okay. One additional question that I have for you is, we don't have elevation plans, but your, your plan view shows that it's a, it's a proposal, it's a one-story framed garage with no basement, so...
Correct.
So it will match, this addition will match the current roof?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Same roof, same pitch, some, same, same thing, you know, this pitch is so low, you know, you know, some people, they have nice attic space, they can do everything, you know, I have insulation over there, you cannot even go in the attic over there, they're so kind of, you know, packed with the insulation in there.
A question, how many garages do you plan to have when you're done with this? Garage doors?
Well, because I was planning to have, this is not to be determined yet, but I was thinking, you know, either to put like, you know, either 16, one-door garage, you know, 16 or 18 feet, or maybe like a two-garage door, 10 feet and 10 feet, next to each other.
But the existing garage already had, it's a, the existing is a one-car garage or a two-car garage?
Two.
Two-car garage.
Okay.
Correct. With a white door.
Okay.
With a white door. So it could be identical doors, you know.
So here...
I can show you pictures if you like.
And I'm usually kind of the pro on this stuff, but here's the concern I would have as a, as a neighbor or a person that's approving this. Once you're done with this, you'll have, just based on my calculations, your house will be roughly 133 feet wide from end to end, of which 82 of it will be garage and 53 will be house. That's, that's, that's a, that's a ratio that's not aesthetically pleasing in general, but that's a lot of garage compared to house. It just, to me, it'd be like, why do we have a five-car garage and a tiny house to it, you know? Aesthetically, it doesn't, it's not as pleasing, and I don't know why, I understand the idea of having an additional garage, but getting a five-car garage to a 3,000 square foot house, it seems unproportionate, and it seems like you can make this design work and ask for less of variance, and you have space to still get to the 50-foot yard, and then if you need a few more feet, that's, that's a different question, but this seems to be asking for a lot for a house of this size to get this big of a garage.
Well... Is this design, I know it's not probably final, but is it, how close to final is this design? To me, it seems awkward, the way, if I understand where the, I'm assuming the door is where the driveway is, there's a lot of dead space in there. The concern, the concern that I have, Director Peterson, is that we move forward with the approval of this, of this variance, and the plans change. I mean, do the plans have to, do we have to stick to this layout for permits?
The permits will have to be in considerable original conformance with the approved...
With plan.
Okay. The site plan. Now, if, you know, we've got cases where people have taken the existing garages and converted that to living space and use the additional new garage as the garage space, you know, there's no prohibition in how that is used in this determination, because basically we're just, you're considering a part of the primary structure within that 50-foot space.
Right, so it can be anything.
It can pretty much be anything.
Yeah, I mean, I feel for what you're trying to accomplish, I just, I think that there's probably a better way to skin this cat in terms of, it just can be so much more garage and house, and I drove that neighborhood a little today, and there are some houses that kind of are wide and on the corner lots, but it's more house than garage. So I don't know if that's something we're, we're supposed to look at is in terms of that, but I think we should.
You, because of the request for the variation, any of those concerns are perfectly open for discussion and for consideration. At the end of the day, you have to feel comfortable that the standards have been met to grant the variation being requested. How many cars would, I mean, it's 50, it's almost 50 feet long, typical garage is about 20 by 20, so he's got the 20 by 20, and then, I mean, there's some 1,700 square foot homes in that neighborhood, isn't there?
Yes.
Because you could just, you could just go straight across, then, you know, 400, another 20, 20 feet across and 20 feet down, and you'd have a four-car garage.
See...
With no...
I'm... I really, I really, this is kind of, you know, the very delicate situation. I would be, you know, very pleased, you know, to show you, because like me, it's very hard to comprehend everything when I talk to my architect, you know, because I don't have the kind of vision, so. But if you really, really, you know, this is serious matter, we'll make a, like a field trip. I got little post for it, you know. I put even cars in this place on the grass already. And you can see how it's everything planned out. And it's going to be, may be better perspective for you to consider, you know, because.
So I guess one of the questions that, following up on Chairman Kumpas and Commissioner Patel's question. So for, from a practical usable standpoint, from the, what would be the north edge of the existing garage, all the way back and around that whole space from where the driveway enters the existing garage, everything to the left of that or to the right of that is going to be garage, a hundred percent garage?
You, you're asking if I want.
No, no, no. I'm asking you, is the intent right now with this design?
Correct.
And that's where I think Commissioner Patel was going is from here to there, that the majority, you know, is all garage.
That's going to be garage, storage space, which I can accommodate, you know. It's not for me for cars, you know. I like to have a storage, that's what I said, I don't have a storage.
So, and the, and the reason I'm asking is the use, because they're seeing a, in the comments, that the majority of the space will, appears to be for the car garage storage and a smaller space for the house. Okay?
Well.
And that, I just, for clarification of the record.
Correct. I mean, of course you might have a garage door, but that doesn't mean, you know, it's going to be exclusively, if you call it garage, it could be also like a, you know, I said, it's, you know, storage space. I like to store some things. I don't have any room to store. I put the snow blower in my shed, you know, actually two of them, you know. And, and this, the, the, the whole shed is filled up. I even was considering, you know, to rid down the shed, you know, because I'm, I'm making mistakes too, you know.
So what we're, Phil, we're trying to say is like, we're trying to find a way to make this work, but the way it's proposed, it's aesthetically going to be garage, garage, garage. And house, garage, garage, garage. Aesthetic to me, that would not be something I would be appe, I would be happy to see in my neighborhood. While the floor panel looks at, we have no elevation to see it, and we'll see more garage door than we'll see house, actual house. And that's, that's a concern for me, you know. If you, if there was, like, we're doing an addition and we're moving the garage over, and then would you choose to do what you want inside? And there's no driveways leading up to it? That's, that's a little different than what we're talking about here. But this looks to me, you'll have ability to have five garage doors, potentially up to five garage doors, or four.
Not five garage doors and not four.
Or four, let's say, four.
Not four, no, no, not four. There'll be, you know, right now, I'm, right now discussing, it's not going to be, if per plan, you know, may, it's either three or two. And I'm opting for a two.
Well, you have two right now.
No, I have one garage door.
A two-car garage door.
Correct, two-car garage.
You'll potentially add one more two-car garage door. So when I say four, I'm saying you'll have up to a dump.
I thought you were talking about the garage doors.
Yes, the garage doors.
It's going to be two.
So either two, two-car garages or four singles is what it'll look like. So one, two, and then two singles of potential, right? When you add all that up and how much garage you have, you have more garage than house. And that's for us to grant a variance for that.
You know, people, they have a, the full, full house up, upstairs, and they have a huge basement downstairs, which doubled the size of the usable, usable space upstairs. And when I was looking at the house, when I look at the rules and everything, oh, I said, oh my God, that's a nice property, nice neighborhood and everything. Let me, let me buy it and just build the garage and which, with the storage. So I can use the storage because people, they have a beautiful attic. They convert it to the storage, to living spaces. I can't either, neither do the attic, I cannot do. My neighbor, you know, one of the neighbors I visit, he had some small space, so he raised the roof. You know, people, they choose to raise roofs and they go up. I choose to go a little bit with the garage. And, you know, when you visit my property, you see how is the trees, how the, the garage is going to be hidden by the tree. It's not going, if you drive by, you know, I, it's not going to bother you, I promise. Because, you know, if you come into me and, you know, we can sit down and we can walk around and you have a visual inspection of the property, maybe you may have a different point of view. Here, it was even for me very hard to comprehend what my architect is planning, you know. And, and then, you know, I put sticks, I put cars on the cars, and you see, you know, how, how it's going to work. I'm planning to put, you know, use this property. And we just remember one thing, you know, we, we just having this hard discussion and everything. It's only because unfortunately, you know, the yard here, the, the side, the, the side of the building, which we're talking about, in the rules, it says rear. If I look in my property and I look it up and this is the side, every neighbor knows is the side, and every neighbor knows about the side. Nobody knows that's a rear when I'm looking to the left. To the left is the next neighbor. It's not like, you know, my rear backyard. I don't even use this as a rear backyard. I can't. If this going to be kind of called like, it's supposed to be left side, right side, back, front and everything, I would just apply for, you know, permit fifteen feet. I have a, you know, and I would have, I can build anything over there and will be perfectly good. Now we just got to have all this, and, you know, I, I didn't plan to bring this up or anything like this, but since I was asked for, by Ms. Janet, you know, I mentioned, you know, I come into the city with my plans, you know, with my, I draw everything. And they told me, Philip, no problem, you can go as close to the, your neighbor fifteen feet. So this is kind of, it's per, per, you know, per common sense, it's, it's, it's allows. But unfortunately, the rules are written and we have to obey, I understand, I respect this absolutely. So now the, the rule is says fifty instead of fifty, because they, somehow this, this side, the yard is called not side, it's rear. In other words, I'll be able to build everything and I will never come back to, to the basement.
So how many, how many trees do you have to cut to implement this plan?
As of right now, none, because I have a big, big, big trees and this, this, the portion of the driveway is going, going around the tree. One tree is in question, was in question, but this tree is kind of dead with no live branches anyway, so. But all the, the good trees or anything, there's nothing to be influenced about trees.
Thank you.
I have a question for Director Peterson. So am I, so he has the two-car garage already. Are we saying he could put another two hundred, or another two-car garage next to this without any hardship?
Detached.
Detached, yeah. Detached. We have that situation all over the place. We've had individuals come in and ask to put one-car additions on, which have been granted. We've done that by right. You know, each, each case is unique in itself because of the uniqueness of the property and the neighborhood and the ask. As much as you'd like to try, try to draw comparisons, sometimes it's difficult. And this, this particular case, you know, at the end of the day, whether he uses it for storage, whether he takes the old garage and creates it to new living space, or that is somewhat irrelevant. Okay? It's the structure and the, that rear setback.
I'm going to smart the hardship.
Yeah, we have, you know, the, the hardship is, as he stated in his letter, he has no usable space in the basement because it's a crawl space, an unusable crawl space. He's got a very low pitched roof system and no attic space on the house. And a lot of the houses in that neighborhood are built that way. So therefore, his, and he's trying, you know, to maximize this use of his yard. Did I summarize that correctly?
I have a question.
Sure.
So when we're talking detached garage, right?
Yeah.
So let's fig, I don't, let me understand this. So that means, you know, I can put detached garage. How far from the main house got to be detached garage?
Uh, because you're going to be having combustibles in there, should be ten feet.
Ten feet?
Mm-hmm. That's just for fire separation.
So, you know, Mr. Neal, you know, if I'm allowed to build the structure, you know, ten feet away from my building, which is very kind of, you know, from here to the third row over there, you know, and I can put my garage over there, it will go, it will be like a sore eye, you know, garage like this next to the nice, beautiful building, you know, where it is. It's much nicer, it's going to be just, you know, in a one single piece. Because if I put another piece, you know, and I don't have to appear for the variance or anything like this, then, you know, then it's, it's, it's doesn't, you know, detached garage, it's, it'll be good if I can put right in a corner either way, you know, far away for a bit, this, I understand. But since I can put so close to the building, you know, I might as well, I can put it together, it will be one piece with one single door. You know, I see many neighbors, they have a two-car garage doors, you know, three-car garage doors, you know. So walk through the neighborhood often, spend lots of time, talk to the neighbors, and, you know, they have a big garage. Just, oh my God, they have a, the door, they have even ten feet tall garage doors. My garage is going to be low profile and everything and, and be using, you know.
And would he be able to do something like this? Would he be allowed to do that? To this line here, to this line here.
Hold on a second.
My pen kind of worked out here.
So.
So would he be able to do this without?
Yeah, this is, yeah.
So that's something, make that a side porch garage.
Philip, just so you can understand what he's doing. Basically, and I'm not sure how much footage you have between this line and here. But he's saying to minimize the encroachment into the rear yard, you know. But do something like this, so it's a side load here, so you have more space back in, at the actual rear yard. And there's a little symmetry between here and here. You know, this, we would, we'd still, it looks, the way you draw it, drew it, that there would still be a, a variance required, but it wouldn't be the significant variance being, it'd be a lesser variance.
Closer to a minimum.
Yeah, closer to a minimum. That's just a concept he threw out. I wanted to show you before I made my comment. And my comment, that as long as it didn't go past this twenty-five foot building line in the front, the corner side yard setback, that's not a, that's not an issue. Building this on here is not an issue. It would just be, you know, whatever this distance here would be. And it would be a lesser, we could, if it's something you're willing to consider, we could schedule this for, you know, continue the hearing, so you could look at it and consider it, or we can move forward, you know, give you a chance to consider another option.
I think two things that would help us, Phil, is some elevations of what the house is going to look like too. The way I'm visualizing this right now is just a lot of garage in the house. And if we can find a way to conceal that a little better, I'm all for, listen, I'm a car guy. I have, I understand the idea of wanting space for cars. I'm trying to make this as aesthetically as possible, but, and I drove by his house today. He does a fantastic, the house looks fantastic. Landscape's great. His garage is actually open, it's spick and span inside, so. I'm not, I, I know you'll do a good job of keeping the house aesthetically inside clean, but we, we're, for me, I'm trying to find a way to make this now look like garage and house is afterthought, you know what I'm saying? So that's kind of what I see as it being now. And I don't have any elevations or not to judge it besides just the top view right now. And when I just do quick measurements, when I see eighty feet of garage and fifty feet of house, it's concerning. So I'm trying to find a way to see if there's different ways to skin this cat and make this work. I think that's a possibility. Because it seems like we're adding a lot more than we need to potentially and getting is more wider than we need to if we don't need to. That's just my thoughts on it.
The other thing that we have to consider is that when we do a vari, a variance, it goes with the property. So when you sell, the next owner is going to have the variance as well. So we don't know what the next owner is going to do with the fact that they can build up to that sixteen-foot setback line.
That's a good point, right.
So what the Commissioner Sayward is saying, Philip, is that the, the, whatever variation is granted today stays with the land after you sell the property. So all future owners have that right. And they may not be utilizing that space in that, the way you would do it. And the encroachments may then warrant different structures, a different view. They could then, because once the variation is granted, unless there's very hard conditions, if someone wanted to come in in the future to the future building code official or future organization, want to put a second story on it, now you've got two stories on the whole site. And I think that's the concern that you're, that is trying to be expressed. So it is a very large ask, but I think, you know, we're trying, the Commissioner, the PZBA is trying to find a solution to get you your desire for more garage space, yet look at a more minimal or the minimum necessary of a variation to accomplish that goal, as stated. And, you know, if it's something that you would like to, you know, I think my hearing of what's being stated tonight, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is I'm hearing everybody wanting to work to try and come to a solution.
Thank you, absolutely.
And I think maybe if for another month to talk about, maybe talk to the architect about some conceptual differences and then come back next month. And if you have got a little change, fine. If not, you can come back and present this, you know, go with the same direction. But I think that, that's what I'm hearing from the PZBA members of, to summarize it.
Yep.
Mine is, it's seventeen hundred and sixty square feet. That's like four two-car garages. That's a lot of, and it's, the house is three, it's, it's more than fifty percent, like Commissioner Patel said. It's just a lot of square footage for garage, for garages.
Well, but like I said, it's not going to be only garage. It's going to be kind of, you know, everybody got their storage space, they can put, you know, you know, snow blowers and things like that. You know, so this is, this is, you know, what's the garage is going to be used not only for the cars, but, yes.
Go ahead, Chair, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Are you planning on having this entire space heated and air-conditioned?
I didn't think about conditioning, but may, I may put like a split unit, but I know I would like to have a heated. I was planning to put a heating floor. I would like to, you know, have over there, you know, it's going to be like a, you know, nice place garage with a resting area, with, you know, with a couch, with a TV.
I'm sorry.
You know, so that's going to be kind of, you know, to, to put cars over there, you know, and, and also have, you know, place where you can stay, maybe friends comes over, you know. So, but since you, when is the next meeting?
That would be August twenty eighth, uh, no, for me, hold on, whoa, I don't have my phone.
That's okay.
It's, it's the, August twenty fourth. It's the fourth Thursday. It'll be one month, approximately a month. So I'm seeing a lot of drawing going on here as people are trying to figure out ways to help you, but yet, you know, Congressman.
Well, I think we're trying to lessen the impact of the, of what you're asking for. What we, when we consider variations, we always try to do the very minimum variation that's required. So that's, that's one thing that we've, we're kind of stuck on here. And then, you know, just the character of the neighborhood does not have such a large garage versus the small house. So we're trying to minimize the impact of that garage for you.
They have people in Glenbrook, oh my God, you know, they have a huge garages there.
I think, I think once you get some elevations put together, I think that'll kind of spell out a lot for everyone. Anywhere like elevations of how the house will look once it's potentially, the architect will do it. Other, we have other ones that, other applications that have elevations that'll show, but this will look like when it's done, you know. And that, that helps visualize what we're, we're approving, and we don't have that either. And that doesn't help.
So you're saying I should ask the, my architect for?
Let me show you where I'm referring to.
Brandon, you said?
I've got, I've got it, Commissioner. We have a case coming up tonight, which is going to be changing a single-story house to a second story.
Okay.
And so basically, what they did is, what would it, what might it look like? What is your proposing look like today? And what does, again, so just, and it doesn't have to be a hundred percent, but it has to give massing, it has to give some, some information so the ZBA members can look at the visual, potential visual impact of the house in the neighborhood. That would be helpful for the. That would be helpful for the current, the current end on that level.
Hi, okay, so. I understand the concern for Commissioner, two caution commissioners. And I'm going to talk to my architect, you know, so, and I would like to probably continue this on the next meeting. And I would take, you know, I would take under consideration everything. I try to make a smaller place, you know, smaller garage. I'll go to my.
It doesn't necessarily need to be, it wouldn't, the way we kind of sketched it, it wouldn't really be smaller. It would just be less impact on the variance. So we look at the variance, is basically you're going from fifty feet to sixteen feet. If we can go from fifty feet to, you know, thirty feet or something like that, that's, that's, that's what to us is the minimum variance. I know that for you, it's the minimum amount of storage. But for us, the minimum variance is the least amount of impact on the existing restrictions to the building code or the zoning code.
No, no, I understand. So let me, so instead of today making this decision, which kind of may be negative or anything like this, let me go back. Absolutely, I can, you know.
And if you, I'm here all next week. Come in, if you have any questions, I can go over, I've seen kind of the thought process in some of the sketching tonight to explain that and show that. So if that's what you would like to do, I'll make myself available for you, Philip.
Okay, I just, yeah, well, okay.
So is it your intent to ask for a, we have to hear the words from you.
Yes, because see, like I, you know, I understand now that, so I'm applying for variation. And then, you know, maybe I would take under consideration, I mean, I'll be looking for a smaller variation than what you have. See, I went even, you know, a couple days, I don't know this, I can show you, of course.
So this is smaller variation also, but I can't even see.
So, so. It's a smaller, smaller variation, so I'm going to prep this with my, with my architect. But that's another previous one, sorry. Which going to be the, I'm not going, it's not going to be sixteen feet, thirteen, sixteen feet, it's going to be twelve, twenty-four feet.
So that's what the plant commissioners are explaining to you, is to look at other options at this point in time. They're open, they also, they're open to the discussion, just trying to look at.
I'm sorry.
Get it sound.
No, I'm trying my best, you know. Can I apply for a changing the naming of the side of the rear to side?
Oh, you think this was an interesting discussion? No, because that, that would impact every single corner lot in the city. And that's, that's not, you have to remember, if that's the case by changing it, your shed, that's in the backyard, would have to go away because that automatically becomes illegal, because sheds are only allowed in the backyard.
You want to change this, the shed is long.
No, but the, the zoning code on that matter is a standardization throughout the whole city. And it's a, it's actually a zoning principle that the narrow yards are the front and rear.
Absolutely, I understand.
And, and a lot of people who buy corner lots and they don't necessarily know, their realtors or others don't necessarily explain it to them, because we hear that case all the time. Well, I thought I was buying this big yard, what do you mean I can't use that extra twenty-five feet to the street? What do you mean I have to hold the fence back here?
Well, we know that.
And, and, but.
Approval first from your office, you know.
Well, the, the final approval was not, was mine to sign off on, and that was a misinterpretation by a new inspector that had been here less than a year.
That's fine, I'm not.
So the S, the issue is just because there was, by concept, it was done, we have to make sure it's right with the zoning code. And, and I understand why you would look at it when you look in, as your neighbor said, yeah, it functions as a front yard, it really does. But we've got hundreds of those throughout the whole town, and others in the same, similar situations still follow the zoning codes.
Can I also, can I bring to your attention, please, one more thing before we, you know, thank. One more, everything, hold on one second. If you can take, oops, sorry, one second, let me organize meetings. Here we go. I mean, thank you very much for coming and supporting my case, thank you. And, you know, I'd just like to mention, when, when I get here, starting my procedure, I get a little map, you know, from your office. I went through all my neighbors. Would you take under consideration, looking, they make some notes over there, also neighbor comments. And, you know, take also under consideration what the people, they live in a very close vicinity, what they think about my project. And, you know, because it looks like they approve, they like this, and, you know, we should think also about my very, very close neighbors who lives, you know, within, you know, five hundred feet or thousand feet around me. I went to them, I invite them to my house, some of them, some of them they come in, they accept my invitation, they look it up. I show them, I show them the pictures, what I'm planning to do. And they've been very supportive to me, you know, so maybe we should take this also under consideration. I really appreciate it, like this gentleman, he took his time. And I bet, you know, when other people like Kathy, George, Jerry, Larry, Tom, Jim, you know, Zofia, oh, Hilda, oh my God, she lives across the street from me, you know. And maybe they, they would, you know, you should listen to their voices also. Because those guys, you know, absolutely can kind of, you know, in support.
We absolutely take that into consideration, and it's great that you, you went through all this work, and it only supports your case. Again, as Janet has mentioned, this variance goes with the land. So maybe in the future, the next owners will, you know, try to expand on it, and then they're going to create all kinds of, you know, enemies in the, in the neighborhood. So, so we have to take it into consideration. I think we're on the right track. If, and I, I strongly believe that if you talk to, talk to their architect and not only discuss, you know, the size of the variance, you know, the minimum size of the variance, but also think about how the space is used and, you know, think about, you know, air conditioning and heating the space, you don't maximize it. I don't know if he's looked at that or not, to me, it doesn't look like he did. But it might be worth doing, and then elevations will, will not only help us, but it will help you. You'll, you'll get an understanding of what, you know, what your future dream home will look like. So it's, we're postponing by a month, but I think if we, if that's what you're asking.
Yes.
I think it might be well worth it.
Dan, he could do a side porch garage on this side, right, too?
Yes, I did.
If you end up doing something like this, whatever, this is what he's buildable here. He could put a driveway in this side too, right, like across here? He'd be able to build a driveway without a variance, right?
Hire him as a consultant.
The, he could put, what he's talking about is possibly putting a third, a third drive off the, what would that be, the south? Part of the lot, yeah, to the, to the rear, and then enter this way if you didn't want to do kind of a side load from the other side. There's, there's all kinds of different variations. What the goal, I think, Commissioner Patel's getting through, and if you want to explain this, is that minimize the distance, the maximum variation you're asking for, more to a minimum. But then you have some other options of loading different ways and still can get closer to getting the square foot.
It's probably even more.
A little more.
Yeah, so here, the way I looked at this, so you actually have right now, without any variance required, you can do eighteen hundred square feet adding to your house as a garage, so. Because you have, I calculate about fifteen feet left from the house to where your setback is right now. And you have a hundred feet this way. So am I correct in that, Dan?
So are you talking about a horseshoe, like a horseshoe to make a house?
So from here to here, he has a hundred feet, because this is a hundred and thirty foot lot.
So the distance is from the side of the house now to the.
To right here.
Here is twenty, it's fifteen, it's roughly eighteen feet.
Roughly eighteen feet.
Yeah, with my.
I don't know if that's enough to make that work.
No, no, I'm just saying, without variance, he can head, this is a hundred, this is eighteen, he has eighteen hundred feet, he could add without a variance.
Correct.
So if you kind of reconfigure that eighteen hundred feet, you have storage, part of your garage is going to be storage, as you're saying. So you don't need access for a car to get there, for, even a motorcycle is easy to get there. You can put some storage back here. I think you can creatively come up with a more aesthetically pleasing design and ask for a lot less variance and still get the square footage you're looking for. You won't lose much in terms of square footage of what you're looking for in a garage. I think your architect has just come up with a little better plan that's less impact on the variance and put something to this effect. Okay? Sorry for the mess of scratching.
That's okay. So the applicant had stated that he would be continuing, asking for continuation till the regular August meeting. And that's what we would need then a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
This has to be roll call.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
Thank you very much, so will you be in contact with Director Peterson and we'll guide you?
Let's talk Monday. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kachansky?
All right, the next case on the agenda is case number twenty-three dash eleven V. Applicant is John Lenz at three oh seven Viola Lane in Prospect Heights. And the nature of the application is a variation to reduce, reduce a side yard setbacks for an addition to a legal non-conforming home. Can I please have a motion to open public hearing case number twenty-three dash eleven V at eight oh three?
I'll make motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I see the applicant is here, or are you representing the applicant?
I am the applicant.
You're the applicant. Can I swear you in? Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
John Lenz, address is three oh seven Viola Lane, Prospect Heights, Illinois, six zero zero, seven zero.
If you could, if you could please present your case for us.
Yeah, I am requesting a variance of the interior side yard setbacks on both sides of my property. On the west side, from the required fifteen foot, I'm requesting to go thirteen point four, two feet for a garage addition. And on the east side, from the fifteen foot to nine foot ten for a master bedroom addition with the basement. The existing house is a legal non-conforming, built prior to then the existing setback requirements, and I'm trying to keep the alignment appealing with the, with the side yard that existing, conform to the existing setbacks that the house is right now.
Any, any comments from the director?
The proposed plan stays in keeping with the existing side walls that were already pre-built or part of the original construction, so they're not asking for any additional encroachment into the required side yards. This is a case where the code, any expansion of a non-conformity, so he's increasing it to the rear yard on this case, on these cases, it's technically expanding the non-conformity. However, the proposed additions are in the, are allowed in the rear yard. So basically, it's a middle, as we see it, it's a small variation that can keep the same building lines as the existing house.
Any questions from the commissioners to the applicant?
And both of the additions are single-story, is that correct?
Correct, it's a split-level house, so the actual, the master bedroom addition would be on the upper floor. So there will be a basement with the master bedroom addition.
So the roof lines are consistent?
Any other questions? Anybody from the public that would like to speak to the case?
I do need to read into the record, we did receive an email from neighbors of Greg and Eileen Stockel at three oh three Viola Lane, a copy of their email is given to them. There's a public hearing for the house at three oh seven Viola. They're asking for variations to reduce the side yard setbacks from fifteen to thirteen point five on one side, nine feet, ten inches on the other. I oppose the variation, I do not want to set a precedent for households to increase the length of their homes, houses, and reduce the open spaces between houses. My wife and I moved in Prospect Heights for the open space and trees, please preserve that space. As known, no case has set precedent, each case that comes before us is based on the merits of the lot in each of the considerations before us. So with that, this will become exhibit number eight for the packet. Okay, thank you, that's all.
All right, if there are no other questions, there's no, if there's no other comments, I'd like a motion to close case number twenty-three dash eleven V.
The public hearing.
The, I'm sorry, the public hearing, yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, thank you.
Did you need the receipts for?
Thank you.
This seems to me like they've bought a house that was already in, that was already non-compliant, and you can't punish them for trying to add to the same size of the house that they're there now, so.
Yep.
I think this is, to me, it's, it's, it goes with the, goes with the house they have now, and actually, if they didn't allow to do this, I think it'd look worse. So.
In the letter, it's, they're thinking that they're going to increase the length of their house, but actually the width is going to stay the same because the lines aren't going to be exactly the same.
Yeah.
So it only goes deeper in the back.
Yeah.
Where it can.
So again, in this case, I would consider this the minimum type variation that they could ask for.
Any other comments from other commissioners? We're good, okay. Can I have a motion to accept into the record the evidence presented this evening for case number twenty-three dash eleven V?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now, can I have a motion to recommend to the City Council approval of case number twenty-three dash eleven V, which is a very, variation to reduce side yard setbacks for an addition of a legal non-conforming home?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski.
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth.
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Chairman Kempa.
Aye.
Just for your information, the next City Council meeting won't be until Monday, the twenty-eighth of August. They do not have a meeting the first day there. We will talk before then about a request for waiver of course review. Because it was a unanimous vote for recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our last case is the case number twenty-three dash twelve V, it's a public hearing. The applicant is Nick Radovic, twenty-three Elm Street in Prospect Heights.
Two oh three.
Two oh three Elm Street in Prospect Heights. And the application is a variation to reduce side yard setback for an addition to a legal non-conforming home. We have the applicant, can I?
I'm representative, I'm not the applicant.
Okay. Can I have a motion to open case number twenty-three dash twelve V?
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we have a representative for the applicant. All right, so we have a representative for the applicant. Can I swear you in? Uh, do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You could state your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Sebastian, uh, Sebastian Koprowski, representing two oh three Elm Street in, uh, Prospect Heights, Illinois.
Can you spell your last name for the record, please?
Yep, K O P R O W S K I.
Thank you.
Uh, so we're presenting them for a variance on the south yard setback for a reduction, uh, from fifteen feet down to nine point four, around there. Homeowner bought the unit and wants to renovate that, turn a single-family home into a second-story unit for his family and everybody, so he's looking for a variation on that south yard setback to keep with the existing building line and maintain the aesthetics of the house down the line. Minimal approach will be on the front and back for the house to be expanded. A little bit of expansion on the north yard, up to, a little bit less of the north yard setback, along with renovating the driveway to be conforming now. I know I was talking with, uh, Dan, that it's probably not conforming, but we'll renovate the driveway to be conforming, and shift it over to approach the front-loaded garage.
Okay. Director Peterson, do you want to throw some comments at this case for us?
Very, very quickly, um, there was a, some, some of you may have received, uh, an exhibit that showed a, exhibit number six, that showed only a fifteen-foot, two-foot setback from the north property line. That was an original older version. The revised version is that the north setback from the side, that side lot line to the house, the new proposed foundation, it'll be seventeen feet, two inches.
Yes.
So actually, they're moving the structure a little further south than originally proposed. The not, legal non-conforming driveway, as stated, will be shifting a little further to the south to ensure that there's five feet of green space, which is the minimum setback of the driveway to the lot line.
Now, that's positive.
And, um, it's going to be a side load, or a front-loaded, as shown in the elevations, uh, for the new, new driveway. They're proposing to use the, um, majority of the existing foundation because of the, and you can speak to that. And so if you look at the exhibit six, um, the only real area of the variation is a small thirteen-foot six by approximately what?
Uh, that should get revised to be seventeen by, that's just a seventeen.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, that's right, that's where the revision came in, and I've got, of course, my packet has the...
Yes.
So it, you know, it's in the required rear yard, and it's keeping in line with the existing building line. So, um, in scope, we look, we see that as a minimal, uh, minimal variation to, as being presented. We'll let the architect present, if anybody else has questions from the audience.
Anything else from you?
No, unless there's other questions, but...
Any questions?
So you, you have the crosshatched area as the, um, the driveway in front of the frame garage, and the frame garage is being, um...
Demoted.
Demoted. So what's your intention for the asphalt drive that currently runs along that property line?
Um, they may try to keep a partial hard space on that north side of the property, but we will try to move that five feet off the lot line to be, you know, in compliance with zoning. And then reconfigure the asphalt drive to kind of match the front-loaded garage that's being proposed, so...
So are you, are you saying you're going to have the, um, the new driveway and then the existing asphalt driveway?
The existing asphalt will be reconfigured, so it'll more or less be torn up and repaved with a new one, and shifted south, I would say, to be conforming with the five-foot setback off the north line.
But possibly wider, just to keep some additional parking?
Uh, possibly not wider. We'll look at maybe do an additional curb cut and eliminate the one where it is right now, where it's not really planned out yet, but we can work on getting that to be compliant.
So, uh... But either way, you're going to bring it into compliance because it's got to come five feet off the property line?
Yes. So I, I'm thinking it's going to be torn off, repaved in the exact layout, I'm not too sure yet, but we can look at doing that.
Any other questions?
The rear garage is getting demolished?
The rear garage? Yes, the attached one, yes, that's being demoed. And anything in front of it up to the house will be paved over with green space now.
There's other neighbors here.
Yep. Um, is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? I can swear you all at once, if there's more than one, if not, then... Thank you. Do you swear that your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, would you state your name and address for the record?
Cynthia Lubecke, L U B E C K E, two oh five Elm Street. I'm on the north side. I think I told you I was on the south, but I'm on the north side.
Okay.
Containing questions about the driveway. I do have the correct plan. Um, there's the crosshatching of the driveway in front of the garage. I have questions about the driveway that is on the north side of the house, which is directly underneath our windows.
Yep.
Do you know if that will be removed?
Portion of it will be removed, but there may be a portion of it behind to have some hard space there.
So it might be about twelve feet of driveway with five feet between the driveway and the property line?
Yes.
Currently, the house has a security light over that part of the driveway. It shines right in our bedroom windows. And so I wondered, just a request, if that could be avoided when it's rebuilt.
I don't think they're going to be putting a security light in there. Obviously, you've got a two-story, so, uh, that garage will be a single-story there, so I can make a note of that to avoid pointing lights directly at...
Thank you.
I would know their property.
Thank you, that would be good. Um, there's also a row of views that grew right there between our property and theirs. You told me your firm is not doing the landscaping plan.
Our firm is not, but we can probably contract with the landscape architect.
Okay.
If there is some privacy concerns.
Privacy concerns, yes, that, uh, row of views provides kind of a friendly fence. You can say hi through it, but you can't stare at each other. And, uh, it's quite tall. A six-foot fence would not block our view of their backyard. If we're on our deck, or even my kitchen window, I could look right into their yard and invade their privacy if those trees are removed and replaced with something less than eight or nine feet tall. That's just a, a request.
There was no plan of the windows used. They were going to be tried to save during construction.
Okay.
Uh, and then probably replaced if they are damaged during construction. It just depends on...
That could happen, yeah.
So, but we can discuss with them on privacy, and I don't know, they walk around, talk with the neighbors, you can maybe stop by and see if they're...
Yeah, I haven't been able to see them since the end of May. I know they're out of town.
Excuse me, Ms. Lubecke, so, just so I can, we can note it correctly here.
Yes.
You want, one of your requests, so there is that they could preserve the existing landscaping along that, their north property line, which presents a natural privacy screen?
Yes, or replace it with something as tall.
As tall, okay. I just want to make sure...
I think they'll be unhappy with something shorter when they realize we can look right at it.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's clear for the record.
All right, all right. My other requests are landscaping-related, so since you're not doing that work, I'll just look for an opportunity to talk with the radical...
Can we make sure we're talking to the microphone, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll, uh, my other concern is about landscaping, so I'll just talk to the homeowners about that, since his firm is not doing that work.
Okay.
And I have a question for Dr. Peterson. If you have a light on that side of the building, are they allowed to have it facing the house opposite?
That's a great question. It's not so much whether they can or can't, but does it create a glare? Does it create a light impact on that house? Because our code just requires that you cannot have a light that creates a glare into the other room or light. The parking lot lighting requirements, the one-foot candle bleeding onto another property, doesn't necessarily apply to single-family homes. We've had some situations where folks have put very bright spotlights because they have large rear yards, while they don't realize that that glare goes into the neighbor's yard. And we've, we actually use that section of the code. So what we, we do is, you know, we go and talk to them, most of them downgrade the wattage of the light and the style light, and, or redirect the light, you know? And so that's something we can make a note. We have done that in the past. I think we had a variation last year where we were on a garage addition, where we required that he couldn't put, the, after he couldn't put certain lights on in the garage. Because it was coming so close to the property line, the commission could state that as a condition of the variation. You know? That no, no lights that would create a glare or, uh, uh, impact, light might impact on the neighbors, um, would be prohibited.
Reduce, reduce light pollution?
It's just, it's, it's not light pollution, it's just to not cause a glare, because if you can't control the light that's being shined into your house, or into your bedrooms, or into your family room, it could be impacted. And that our ordinance prohibits it anyway.
So it's a matter of where they direct the light, because if they're trying, if you're, if you're thinking of having a car parked on that side, you're, you may want to have a light there, I guess, but you want to have it shining down so it's not obviously shining, you know, out of the house.
Yeah, I understand, pointed down versus straight across, you suggested, so...
We used to hear, well, it's an LED, it doesn't provide foot candles, it doesn't provide lighting much, but yet it's a very bright glare. And that's why the, our ordinance was changed a couple of years ago, so it addressed the glare factor.
Your concern is on the side of the house, right?
The north side.
On the north side.
The north side of the house. That's your concern, right? That would be the side of the garage in essence.
Yes.
For the existing driveways.
Yeah. Well, that existing driveway in essence is going to be, at worst, not be used as a driveway anymore, because now a garage is going to be blocking it, right? It's not a passageway.
But he's saying they may...
You know, the drive, the garage is going to be attached to the house now, so it'll be seventeen off, seventeen feet off that north lot line.
Basically, it, they've got to keep that north edge of the driveway five feet in, so the driveway distance will shrink from about, what, thirteen feet right now, I think it's pretty close, down to about eight, but they're shifting the house there, you know, so...
So they're going to have, they're going to have, they're still going to have driveway to the side of the house?
Just for, you know, a lot of, you know, we have a lot of houses that have the side parking next to it, or they can put their garbage cans or some other things along the side of the house.
They'll have three teenagers soon, so...
Oh, so you know what the issue's going to be.
Three to four teenagers, uh, and that's what the, you know, client represents, saying he may park his car there, or just maybe use for storage, or, you know, miscellaneous stuff on the side, so may or may not be...
Storage would be a problem.
We, we have people that put boats.
I was going to say, you can put boats, their campers can...
As long as it's behind the front line of the house.
Right.
Storage, I've been trash cans, I don't know if he has a boat, so, just want to clarify.
Yeah.
That was all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no other comments or questions. Can I please have a motion to close, uh, public hearing number twenty-three dash twelve V?
Before you ask that, can I, do we have to...
We can discuss afterwards.
Well, no, but if we're adding stipulation or, or adding lights, do we have to get them to agree to that before we close it?
We...
We can add it as a condition.
As a condition.
And then he's going to have to design around the condition.
That's what I do, uh, elaborate on. So, can I please have the motion to close, uh, public hearing number twenty-three dash twelve V at eight twenty-four PM?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so similar cases before, minimum ask, um, but since, since we are doing reconfiguring of the driveway, which is bringing it back to code, we should, I don't know, if we can put that in the, as a condition?
It'll be part of the permit requirement, that's part of the building code.
Okay.
It, it's stated as part of the public record.
Okay.
If you want to add it as a condition point, just the...
What is the comment?
Yep.
And then the, uh, the light, the light glare, reducing the light glare will also be added as a, as a, as a condition.
So we'll draft it as a, uh, any, any lights on that area must be pointed down or away from the property to...
Any other concerns from any other commissioners?
No.
Okay, um, can I have a motion to accept into the public record the evidence presented this evening for case number twenty-three dash twelve V?
I'll make one.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, can I have a motion to recommend to the city council approval of case number twenty-three dash twelve V with, uh, which is a variation to reduce side yard setback for addition to a legal non-conforming home? With two additional comments, that the, um, light glare be reduced on the north side of the building, and that the driveway be brought back to conformity by, uh, being five feet away from the adjoining lot.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Mieszewski?
Aye.
Commissioner Seaworth?
Aye.
Chairman Kempa?
Aye.
Again, um, the ci- city council meeting will be on Monday, August twenty-fourth, uh, when Nick gets back, what...
He should be back early August, I believe.
Okay, when he gets back, give me a call, because I'll need a letter requesting a waiver of first reading.
Waiver of what?
Waiver of first reading.
Okay.
Otherwise, you're going to be August twenty-eighth and then Sep- the second Monday in September, or, okay, which...
Question another month.
Okay, and because this was a unanimous recommendation of conditions, that, uh, it will help the process. Keep it moving.
All right, uh, next section is public comments. I don't know if we, do we have anybody from the public for additional comments? If not, then, uh, can we get some updates on previous applications, please? When are we going to, uh, barcelata?
Hopefully in less than a week. Um, they, their, their facility is absolutely gorgeous. They, uh, not shy away from making it very beautiful. What's unique is what was going to be their outdoor, which they converted to actual space. They've got garage doors, but instead of a traditional glass that rolls up, they've got it so it hinges and folds up, so it creates another layer, an awning effect on open windows. So even in, in inclement weather with weather coming out of the southwest or northwest, it still creates some level of protection and still gets the airflow. Their kitchen is beautiful, and I've, I've never seen that facility that beautiful.
Are they doing improvements to the parking lot?
Yeah, they just, they, uh, yesterday, they took off the top surface and they're repaving, redoing a whole new fresh asphalt.
Took the fence down, and all of a sudden, the parking lot looked awful compared to the building.
Yeah.
But they stripped it all.
They stripped it all off yesterday. Um, that should be laid soon and striped. Uh, we've done a preliminary walkthrough and, you know, that they're, I think everybody will be very impressed.
Nice.
Yep, really good. Um, I do have to raise, uh, this to the council, or to the zoning board and the members of the public. I made this announcement Monday night. Contractor and, um, contractor fraud and scams are very significant right now. Within the last two weeks, I've had six properties where homeowners were taken for driveway pavement scams and sidewalk replacement scams. We had four houses on one block. Um, the group is a company, um, they're going by ProVantage Pavement and Masonry out of the city of Chicago. They're basically piggybacking in on a legit name, a legit company out in the western suburbs. Their game is to go up and say, hey, um, we can do a rep- resurface re, you know, of your existing, we can do all this stuff, and we've got the asphalt now, we can get it done right away, for cash, I can give you a bigger discount. And, um, so we caught them working without it, but again, no legitimate business, no legitimate address, nobody had a real ID. One guy, in the worst case, and we're pursuing this, they actually made his compliant driveway not compliant by expanding it by about twenty-two feet wide, uh, and filling in the city right away. An illegal culvert filled in the drainage soil with the spoils along the side of the house. They took the gentleman for over nineteen thousand dollars. And, um, you know, they're like ghosts in the wind, but right now, the biggest thing is, is don't, if you didn't call for it or didn't ask for it, don't accept the unsolicited project. Make sure that you have a contract in writing that spells out exactly everything that they're going to provide, because the, the little check sheet that they call the contract... Because the little check sheet that they call the contract didn't say anything. Verify the information. And most importantly, we require permits, and if they did not, they say, oh, the permits aren't necessary, you know, the city's just stealing your money, it's a fraud. And we're pursuing it as best we can, but we know this company doing work in Palatine Arlington Heights, Mount Prospect, Austin, I think I, the call I had today, it sounded like up in Deerfield.
Wow.
So, um, you know, keep an eye out. The scam used to be on just the, at the tar resealer, now it's the full ask. You know, we can come in and give you.
They're actually doing the work?
Yeah. Uh-huh, and it's horrible. It is just horrible.
I thought you were going to say they're taking deposits and not coming.
Oh, one, 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 one person in Arlington Heights, they took about six thousand dollars and now showed up. Another guy got a little bit of a driveway deal done. He paid cash, and then it started rolling back up immediately and crumbling on the side. The gentleman that had the front, the big violation, in the area, the thirty feet wide that they filled in, they actually put a twelve-inch black corrugated plastic culvert pipe, which is not permitted, and just butted it to the existing eight-inch concrete without a band, without anything, at a back pitch, and it's not even at the bottom of the drainage ditch, so all the water's going to go underneath it and blow the driveway up anyway. So we're trying to do our best to catch them, but we really don't have anything to catch because everything is, names don't match. The building that they, they have the address to is a corporate suite office, you know, shared suite office type place. No driver's licenses, no, you know, nobody exists.
But they're talking, but they must, their plates must be legit on their trucks, plates.
Yeah, well, don't know.
Take a picture of the plate.
Well, the problem is the principals aren't out there, you know. I talked, I checked three of the workers, not a single driver's license one, because they were all dropped off. And then they got the back of the asphalt truck one and kicked it off. It's, it's a sad situation, and at the end of the day, the guy that got, had the worst done, is that it's going to cost him a lot of money to bring it back to conforming condition.
That's sad.
Nineteen grand? The guy that, nineteen grand, he got stolen?
Yeah, because he, he went from being a legal property to a non-conforming, and the work was done horribly, and he, they filled in the city right of way. They filled in the drainage ditch, and that's all got to come out. You know, the other ones, you know, you chose to do it, and ultimately, I'm going to have to get them for just double permit fees, but if it fails out, it was you as a buyer made a bad choice. But the hardest one's going to be the senior elderly gentleman, because he's been a victim once, but then it's going to cost him more money to comply, because.
So that's all.
It's all going to come out.
You had to pay for that and then to put it back.
Yeah.
It's really sad, but that's right now, the Better Business Bureau has sent out scam notices. Chicago's one of the hardest ones getting right now. So, plus, we've had a couple, a lot of people doing just general work, contractors doing the work without permits. Then when you go to catch them and find them, their companies aren't legit companies. They're just guys making up a name, handyman special, and, and the people say, well, you gave me a good deal. Yeah, it's wrong, you know, it's, it's going to fail, someone's going to get hurt. This is actually one of the worst summers I've ever seen.
Interesting.
Yep, so.
Any good news to share with us?
First of all.
First of all.
Record for ice goes perfect.
Just everything else is moving. We've been extremely busy this summer. Jen has done an absolutely wonderful job. When we, when I got hired here, um, we were under the impression that the city attorney was filing all of our zoning cases, because that's what we were told. What we found out is that they thought we were recording all of them, so for the last eight years, nothing's been recorded. So we've been tackling it, and Jen has been a regular visitor to the county building in the last.
And my intern, Jordan, has been doing a great job helping me out.
Happy to say that we were almost caught up with my ears, and I have no clue how far back this goes.
Can't tell us either.
What?
They can't tell us either.
They can't, and the county can't tell us when the last time anything had been recorded between two thousand and fifteen and whenever.
Wow.
They, they have no record?
Well, the county would look some up, but you got to give them the evidence.
All our work for the last eight years?
So, and part of this has come up, is we had a person that wanted to do something, and they go, and I said, they turned in a plan, I said, that's not the right plan, you got to go and get it done. We did a variation, and all of a sudden, it hit us, like, it never got recorded. So therefore, stop what you're doing. We had to put everything together, and we got it all, and we're caught up. But it's been a busy summer on that part. And I'll tell you, as much as people talk about the county, at the end of the day, they've been helpful.
They've been very helpful. Very patient with us. We walk in, the security guard just waves at us now.
You again, over here, I'll take you, you're prepared, you've got your documents ready.
Yep, and they're giving us little tips of how to help us, because when we said we don't know how far back we're not recorded, he goes, just, this is what I want you to do. Okay, great, thanks.
So we've got a roadmap to get ourselves caught up.
Wow.
Forty years of ketchup.
It's not that bad, but. On that, that's pretty much it.
That's it. Anything else from any commissioners? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-seven?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you all.